One oh four, one oh four, dash.
Dash.
It's four one oh one is being substituted for four one oh two.
Two, okay. And that's on line five.
Got you. Evening Ron, good evening Christine.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Hey Christine. Good evening everybody.
Two thousand and twenty-one Legislative Agenda Session of the Salisbury City Council. I'd like to call the meeting to order. At this time, please join me in a moment of silent meditation or prayer. Thank you. I'll entertain a motion and a second to adopt the legislative agenda.
So moved.
Your second?
Second.
Here's Jackson. And Ms. Ms. Blake. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Mr. Boda?
Aye.
Ms. Jackson?
Aye.
Ms. Blake?
Aye.
The chair votes aye. Vote is four to zero. I'll entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Boda, Ms. Jackson. Good evening, Mrs. Nichols.
Good evening, Mr. Heath. On the consent agenda tonight, we have the November sixteenth work session minutes, November twenty-third council meeting minutes, December seventh work session minutes, December seventh special meeting minutes, and the December fourteenth council meeting minutes. Resolution number three zero eight four approving the reappointment of Brian Ragor to the Salisbury Zoo Commission for term ending December twenty twenty-three, and resolution number three zero eight five approving the reappointment of John Wright to the Human Rights Advisory Committee for term ending December twenty twenty-two. And I believe I see Mr. Ragor on here.
Evening everyone, it's my pleasure to serve the Zoo Commission again. Looking forward to more great things coming with Thursday, coming forward from our zoo in the future.
That it?
That's it.
Okay, thank you. Well now, call the motion, all those in favor of the consent agenda, please signify by saying aye. Mr. Boda?
Aye.
Ms. Jackson? Ms. Jackson, you're muted. I think we lost her. Let's, let's go to Ms. Blake.
Aye.
The chair votes aye. Ms. Jackson, are you there?
Is it on now? She's muted.
You're on mute. Yeah.
Aye.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Vote is four to zero. The consent agenda is approved. I'll entertain a motion to approve the award of bids.
So moved.
Second.
And Mr. Boda. Before we go, this, uh, Mrs. Miller, if you give me a second, I, I neglected to congratulate Brian for his reappointment. So Brian, good to see you again. We'll see you next, I think next Wednesday, we have a meeting.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Good to see you. Thank you. All right, Mrs. Miller, what do you got tonight? You're on mute Jen.
I'm such a rookie. Um, two award, two award of bids this evening and one change order. So the first award of bids this evening is from the Department of Water Works. It's ITV number two one dash one one seven. It's the Park Plant Flow Meter Replacement. The scope of work included the installation of a sixteen inch magnetic flow meter and a precast concrete vault at the Park Water Treatment Plant. Bids went out on November nineteenth. Bids were opened on December twenty-second. We did get a total of eight bids. The lowest responsive and responsible bidder was Johnston Construction Company from Dover, Pennsylvania, with a total bid cost of two hundred sixty-nine thousand, seven hundred and ninety-three dollars. There is funding in the GL accounts noted.
Any questions or comments? Mr. Boda?
No questions or comments.
Ms. Jackson? Ms. Jackson, we didn't hear you.
I'm sorry, I had to step out a minute. I apologize.
No problem, no problem. Okay. Ms. Blake?
No questions or comments.
Thank you.
Okay.
Go ahead, yeah.
Wonderful. Next, the next item is invitation to bid A dash two one dash one zero three. That's various LED replacement lights and components for the city's streetlights. Uh, these are Cobra Head and Decorative LED replacement lights and/or kits. Uh, bids were posted on October nineteenth. They were opened on November eighteenth. We did receive a total of three bids. The lowest responsive and responsible bidder being ED Supply Company from Salisbury, Maryland. Uh, we estimate the cost to be about two hundred and eighteen thousand dollars, give or take some change. Uh, that's based on the number of fixtures we wind up replacing. Uh, this would be an indefinite delivery, indefinite quantity contract, which means we place orders as needed. Uh, we do have a renewal clause in this one so that we can place orders for up to two additional one-year terms. And again, we will place those orders as needed. Uh, in both cases, uh, the city followed all required bidding practices by publicly posting all solicitations on the city of Salisbury's procurement portal and the state of Maryland's website, e-Maryland Marketplace Advantage. And the departmental memos do have additional details. Uh, the Department of Procurement hereby requests council's approval to award these contracts to the lowest responsive and responsible bidders as indicated. Now, we can go on to the change order if you'd like, or we can stop here and get these approved.
We can stop here and get these approved. All those in favor of the two award of bids, please signify by saying aye. Mr. Boda?
Aye.
Ms. Jackson?
Aye.
Ms. Blake?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. The vote on the award of bids is four to zero. Mrs. Miller, we have a change order?
Yes, thank you. This is change order number, uh, excuse me, number two to request for proposal one nine dash one one seven. That was the Engineering and Construction Services for the Fitzwater Street Lift Station. The Department of Procurement received a request from the Department of Infrastructure and Development to process this change order in the amount of eighteen thousand, seven hundred and seventy-five dollars. This change order provides for additional engineering and construction services to see the construction project through to its anticipated completion in January twenty twenty-one, this month. The departmental memo and change order are attached in your packet for reference. The Department of Procurement hereby requests council's approval to process this change order as noted to the original awarded contractor, George Miles Embier.
Thank you. Questions or comments, Mr. Boda?
No questions or comments, just great to see this is moving on.
Ms. Jackson?
No questions or comments.
You, Ms. Blake?
No questions or comments.
Thank you. Uh, now we'll call a vote on the change order. Uh, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Mr. Boda?
Aye.
Ms. Jackson?
Aye.
Ms. Blake?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. The vote is four to zero on the approval of the change order. Thank you, Mrs. Miller. Have a good night.
Thank you. Thank you, council.
We have two public hearings tonight, uh, on text, versus the text amendment presented by Attorney Mark Tillman. So I'll entertain a motion to approve ordinance number two six three nine for the second reading.
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Boda, seconded by Ms. Blake.
Ready? Okay. All right, this is, uh, ordinance two six three nine. It's an ordinance of the city of Salisbury, Maryland, pursuant to chapter seventeen point two two eight of Title Seventeen Zoning of the Salisbury Municipal Code in section four dash, uh, one oh two of the Land Use Article of the Annotated Code of Maryland for the purpose of amending section seventeen point two eight point oh two oh to allow a single-family dwelling unit in light business and institutional zones. Whereas the ongoing application administration enforcement of Title Seventeen Zoning of the Salisbury Municipal Code demonstrates a need for periodic review, evaluation, amendments that will keep Title Seventeen current. And whereas the mayor and city council may amend Title Seventeen Zoning of the Salisbury Municipal Code pursuant to the authority of the Maryland Code Land Use Article, Section four dash one oh one at seek, and in accordance with the specific provisions of Chapter seventeen point two two eight amendments and rezoning of Title Seventeen. And whereas the mayor and city council requested that the Salisbury Planning and Zoning Commission periodically review Title Seventeen in light of existing procedural practices and input from the city council and members of the public. And whereas Ms. O'Shea Farrer submitted an application to amend the text of Chapter seventeen point two eight entitled Light Business and Institutional District to add single-family detached dwelling unit as permitted use in section seventeen point two eight point oh two oh. And whereas a public hearing on the proposed amendment was held by the Salisbury Planning and Zoning Commission in accordance with the provisions of Chapter seventeen point two two eight of Title Seventeen Zoning of the Salisbury Municipal Code on October fifteenth, two thousand and twenty. And whereas the Salisbury Planning and Zoning Commission did recommend approval of the proposed text amendment to section seventeen point two eight point oh two oh. Now therefore be it enacted and ordained by the city of Salisbury that Title Seventeen Zoning of the Salisbury Municipal Code is hereby amended as follows. Amend section seventeen point two eight point oh two oh permitted uses by adding item U as follows. And it will be capital U and read single-family detached dwelling unit.
Thank you, Mrs. Tillman.
I'd like to make a motion to amend ordinance two six three nine.
What's the, what's the changes, please?
Uh, I'd like to strike, uh, on line five, strike four dash one oh two and insert four dash one oh one.
I'll second that.
Thank you, Mr. Boda. Ms. Blake makes the amendment and Mr. Boda seconds it. I'll now call a vote on the amendment. All those in favor of the amendment as stated by Ms. Blake, please signify by saying aye, Mr. Boda?
Aye.
Ms. Jackson?
Aye.
Ms. Blake?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. The vote on the amendment is four to zero. If there's anybody on the call that would like to, uh, make a statement regarding this, we need to have you sworn in by the city clerk, Mrs. Nichols. So please identify yourself if you want to, uh, speak. Ms. Glanz, do we have any, uh, people to require or request speaking?
No one in the chat and I don't see any hands waving at me.
Okay. Thank you. I will open the public hearing. Anybody that wishes to speak, please signify, uh, that you're willing to do so. Hearing none. I'll close the public meeting and we will now call the vote on ordinance number two six three nine as amended. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Mr. Boda?
Aye.
Ms. Jackson?
Aye.
This is, Ms. Blake?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. Ordinance number two six three nine is approved by a vote of four to zero. We have the second of our public hearings. A tech on text amendments. The ordinance number is two six four zero. A call for a motion to approve ordinance number two six four zero.
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Boda? With that, Ms. Jackson?
Yes.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Mr. Tillman?
Thank you, Mr. Heath. This is an ordinance of the city of Salisbury, Maryland pursuant to chapter seventeen point two two eight of Title Seventeen Zoning of the Salisbury Municipal Code in section seventeen, excuse me, section four dash, it now reads one oh two of the Land Use Article of the Annotated Code of Maryland for the purpose of amending section seventeen point two one two point oh three oh to allow a medical office slash clinic as a permitted use with a shopping center. Whereas the ongoing application administration enforcement of Title Seventeen Zoning of the Salisbury Municipal Code demonstrates a need for periodic review, evaluation, amendments that will keep Title Seventeen current. And whereas the mayor and city council may amend Title Seventeen Zoning of the Salisbury Municipal Code pursuant to the authority granted by Maryland Code Land, Land Use Article, Section four dash one oh one at seek. And in accordance with the specific provisions of Chapter seventeen point two two eight amendments and rezoning of Title Seventeen Zoning. And whereas the mayor and city council requested that the Salisbury Planning and Zoning Commission periodically review Title Seventeen in light of existing procedural practices and input from the city council and members of the public. And whereas Immunotec Bio Center submitted an application to amend the text of Chapter seventeen point two one two shopping centers to add medical office clinic as a permitted use in section seventeen point two one two point oh three oh. And whereas a public hearing on the proposed amendments was held by the Salisbury Planning and Zoning Commission in accordance with the provisions of seventeen point two two eight of Title Seventeen Zoning of the Salisbury Municipal Code on October fifteenth, two thousand and twenty. And whereas the Salisbury Planning and Zoning Commission did recommend approval of the proposed text amendment to section seventeen point two one two point oh three oh. Now therefore be it enacted and ordained by the city of Salisbury that Title Seventeen Zoning of the Salisbury Municipal Code is hereby amended as follows. Amend seventeen point two one two point oh three oh permitted uses by adding item M as follows. And it will read medical office slash clinic.
Thank you, Mr. Tillman.
I'd like to, um, make a motion for an amendment to ordinance two six four zero. Again, on line five, strike four dash one oh two and insert four dash one oh one.
I'll second that.
Blake, thank you, Mr. Boda. We have a, um, motion and a second, uh, to amend. Ordinance number two six four zero. All those in favor of ordinance number of the amendment? To not to ordinance number two six four zero, please signify by saying aye. Mr. Boda?
Aye.
Ms. Jackson? Ms. Blake?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. The vote on the amendment to the motion is passed by a vote of four to zero. Anyone that wishes to speak in this public hearing, please identify yourselves now. So you could be sworn in by the city clerk. Seeing none, uh, I will close the public hearing. I will, first of all, I'll open the public hearing. And, uh, since there is no one that wishes to speak, I will close the public hearing. I'll call for a vote now on our ordinance number two six four zero. All in favor of ordinance number two six four zero, please signify by saying aye. Mr. Boda?
Aye.
Ms. Jackson?
Aye.
Ms. Blake?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Ordinance number two six four zero is approved by a vote of four to zero. I'll entertain a motion to approve ordinance number two six three three for the second reading.
So move.
Second.
Ms. Jackson, Mr. Boda? Mr. Tillman?
Thank you, Mr. Heath. This is an ordinance of the city of Salisbury to accept grant funds from the Somerset County Health Department in the amount of two thousand dollars and to approve a budget amendment to the FY twenty-one Homeless Solutions Program Grant Fund to appropriate funds for coronavirus response hazard pay. Whereas the Somerset County Health Department has awarded the city of Salisbury with Homeless Solutions Program Grant Funding. And whereas the purpose of the grant program is to support homeless services including case management in the city of Salisbury. And whereas the Somerset County Health Department has awarded the city additional funds in the amount of two thousand dollars provide hazard bonuses to the city of Salisbury's homeless services department employees. And whereas all funds shall be used to provide hazard bonuses to the city of Salisbury's homeless services department employees. And whereas appropriations necessary to, uh, execute the purpose of this grant must be made upon the recommendation of the mayor and approval of forfeit to the council of the city of Salisbury. Now therefore be it ordained by the city council, the city of Salisbury, Maryland, that Mayor Jacob R. Day is authorized to accept funding from the Somerset County Health Department for COVID nineteen hazard pay in the amount of two thousand dollars. Be it further ordained that the city's fiscal year twenty-one grant fund budget be and is hereby amended as follows. Increase the FY twenty-one HSP revenue account by two thousand dollars and increase the FY twenty-one HSP salary expense account by two thousand dollars.
Thank you, Mr. Tillman. Questions or comments, Mr. Boda?
No questions or comments.
Thank you. Ms. Jackson?
No questions or comments.
Thank you. Ms. Blake?
No questions or comments.
Hearing none, I'll call the motion. All those in favor of ordinance number two six three three for the second reading, please signify by saying aye. Mr. Boda?
Aye.
Ms. Jackson?
Aye.
Ms. Blake?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Ordinance number two six three three is approved by a vote of four to zero. I'll entertain a motion to approve ordinance number two six three four for the second reading.
So move.
Second.
Ms. Jackson, Ms. Blake? Mr. Tillman?
Mr. Heath, this is an ordinance of the city of Salisbury approving an amendment of the city's general capital project fund budget to reallocate funding for the GOB roof project. Whereas Schedule B of FY twenty-one budget ordinance authorized the city to reallocate unused funds previously assigned to other capital projects to fund the government office building roof project. And whereas the police communications project has fifty-five thousand, four hundred dollars of available funds previously transferred from the general fund to be reallocated. And whereas the Department of Procurement is seeking to move unused funds from the police communication project to the GOB roof project to provide the funds for the necessary improvements. And whereas appropriations necessary for the roof project funding must be made upon the recommendation of the mayor and approval of forfeit to the council of the city of Salisbury. Now therefore be it ordained by the city council, the city of Salisbury, Maryland, that the city's general capital projects fund budget be and is hereby amended as follows. Under project description, there's going to be, uh, under police communications pay-go previous year, there's going to be a decrease of fifty-five thousand, four hundred dollars. Under GOB roof, uh, there's going to be an increase of fifty-five thousand, four hundred dollars. Under expenditures, uh, police communications will be decreased by fifty-five thousand, four hundred dollars. And the GOB roof, uh, under the, um, account description of buildings will be increased by fifty-five thousand, four hundred dollars.
Thank you, Mr. Tillman. Questions or comments, Mr. Boda?
No questions or comments.
Jackson?
No questions or comments.
Thank you. Ms. Blake?
None.
Thank you. I'll now call the motion. All those in favor of ordinance number two six three four for the second reading, please signify by saying aye. Mr. Boda?
Aye.
Ms. Jackson?
Aye.
Blake?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Ordinance number two six three four is approved by a vote of four to zero. I'll entertain a motion to approve ordinance number two six three five for the second reading.
So moved.
Second.
I, I apologize. Who, who made the motion?
Mr. Boda.
Yeah, and I said.
Thank you. Ms. Mr. Boda and Ms. Jackson. Mr. Tillman?
This is an ordinance of the city of Salisbury approving an amendment of the city's water and sewer capital project fund budget to reallocate funding for the structural study and the Park Water Treatment Plant interior improvements projects. Whereas Schedule B of the city's FY twenty-one budget ordinance authorized the city to reallocate unused funds previously signed to other capital projects to fund structural study and the Park Water Treatment Plant interior improvement projects. And whereas the scenic drive water main has a hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars of available funds previously transferred from the water and sewer fund to be reallocated. And whereas the Department of Water Works is seeking to move unused funds from the scenic drive water main project to the structural study and the Park Water Treatment Plant interior improvement projects to include the funding for the necessary improvements. And whereas the appropriations necessary for the Park Water Treatment Plant project must be made upon the recommendation of the mayor and approval of forfeit to the council of the city of Salisbury. Now therefore be it ordained by the city council, the city of Salisbury, Maryland, that the city's water and sewer capital projects fund budget be and hereby is amended as follows. And under the, uh, description scenic drive water main, uh, the pay-go previous year, it will be reduced by seventy-five thousand dollars. The structural study pay-go previous year will be increased by seventy-five thousand. Under scenic drive water main, uh, under the category of construction, it will be decreased by seventy-five thousand. And the structural study under engineering will be increased by seventy-five thousand. Down under the, um, scenic drive water main, there will be, under the pay-go previous year will be decreased by a hundred thousand and the Park Water Treatment Plant interior improvements will be increased by one hundred thousand. And scenic drive water main will be decreased by one hundred thousand and Park Water Treatment Plant interior improvements increased by one hundred thousand dollars.
Thank you, Mr. Tillman. Questions or comments, Mr. Boda?
No questions or comments.
Ms. Jackson?
No questions or comments.
Thank you. Ms. Blake?
No questions or comments.
Thank you. I'll now call the motion. I'll now call the motion to approve ordinance number two six three five. All those that are in favor, please say aye. Mr. Boda?
Aye.
Ms. Jackson?
Aye.
Ms. Blake?
Aye.
Here votes aye. Ordinance number two six three five has been approved by a vote of four to zero. I want to entertain a motion to approve ordinance number two six four two for the first reading.
So move.
Second.
Ms. Blake, Mr. Boda?
Ms. Jackson?
Mr. Tillman?
This is an ordinance of the City of Salisbury authorizing the mayor to sign the supplemental agreement and cost share agreement and accept a grant from the Maryland Department of Transportation State Highway Administration and approving an amendment of the grant fund budget to allocate said funds for the purposes of implementation. Whereas the City of Salisbury executed a master memorandum of understanding with the Maryland Department of Transportation regarding federal aid projects on February first, two thousand eighteen, and whereas the city desires to utilize the Maryland Department of Transportation memorandum of understanding to perform design services associated with the nail or mill bridge replacement project. And whereas the project will replace aging infrastructure and enhance the safety of the transportation network for the city's residents and visitors. And whereas the Maryland Department of Transportation has awarded a grant in the amount of three hundred seventy seven thousand one hundred six dollars and eighteen cents to provide for the nail or mill bridge design, and whereas the city's FY twenty budget ordinance twenty five thirty nine included the projected grant amount of two hundred and eighty thousand. And whereas the actual grant amount has been increased by ninety seven thousand one hundred six dollars and eighteen cents to three hundred seventy seven one thousand one hundred six dollars and eighteen cents. And whereas the city shall accept the grant in the form of reimbursements and transfer of those funds from the reimbursement account to the grant account, now therefore be it enacted and ordained, that the city council of the City of Salisbury, Maryland is hereby authorized the mayor to sign the attached supplemental agreement, accepting the project term and the attached cost share agreement for the betterment of the city and its residents and accept grant, the grant of three hundred seventy seven one hun- three hundred seventy seven thousand one hundred six dollars and eighteen cents from the Maryland Department of Transportation to perform the nail or mill bridge design and further authorizes grant reimbursements to be transferred to the appropriate grant account. Be it further ordained that the city's grant fund budget be amended as follows with an increase in the Maryland Department of Transportation grant revenue account of ninety seven thousand one hundred six dollars and eighteen cents and an increase in the engineering expense account by ninety seven thousand one hundred six dollars and eighteen cents.
Thank you, Mr. Tillman. Questions or comments, Mr. Boda?
No questions. Great to see we're moving forward on this. Actually drove over the bridge the other day, so I got to see it firsthand.
Thank you. Ms. Jackson?
No questions or comments.
Thank you. Ms. Blake?
No questions or comments.
Thank you. I'll now call the motion. All those in favor of ordinance number two six four two for the first reading, please signify by saying aye. Mr. Boda?
Aye.
Ms. Jackson?
Aye.
Ms. Blake?
Aye.
Here votes aye. The first reading of ordinance number two six four two is passed by a vote of four to zero. I want to entertain a motion to approve ordinance number two six four three for the first reading.
So move.
I'll give that to Ms. Blake and a second to Mr. Boda. Mr. Tillman?
This is an ordinance of the City of Salisbury, Maryland to create bicycle facilities on Wayne Street, Milford Street, Power Street, Avery Street, Bateman Street, West Road, Lake Street, Isabella Street, Delaware Avenue, Cypress Street, and West Main Street in accordance with MD MUTCD Chapter Nine as designated by the two thousand seventeen Salisbury Bicycle Network Plan. Whereas the City of Salisbury desires to encourage the use of bicycles throughout the city. And whereas this city chapter SC eleven dash two gives the city charge of all public ways in the city, and whereas the city council adopted the Salisbury Bicycle Network Plan via Resolution Number twenty seven twelve on December thirteenth, two thousand sixteen. And whereas the Department of Infrastructure and Development is in the process of implementing the Salisbury Bicycle Network Plan by making the improvements to the streets listed herein, and whereas the proposed bicycle routes will consist of a west side network of bicycle facilities in both directions along Lake Street from the city limit to US Route fifty, along Delaware Avenue from the city limit to West Main Street, along Isabella Street from Delaware Avenue to North Division Street, along West Road from Delaware Avenue to the city limit, along Cypress Street from Isabella Street to West Main Street, and along West Main Street from Nanakoke Road to Fitzwater Street. And whereas proposed bicycle routes will consist of a university east campus network of bicycle facilities in both directions along Milford Street from Route thirteen to South Division Street, along Wayne Street from Milford Street to Avery Street, along Power Street from Wayne Street to South Division Street, and along Avery Street from Wayne Street to South Division Street. And whereas the portions of Bateman Street already have existing bicycle facilities that shall be upgraded to two-way bicycle traffic, and whereas portions of Isabella Street already have existing bicycle facilities. And whereas in order to define the dedicated bicycle lanes, appropriate lane striping and lane marking must be provided on the pavement, and whereas in order to provide a bicycle route, portions of the roads must be marked as shared between motorized vehicles and traffic and bicycle traffic. And whereas in order to define the portions of the roadway that are to be available for usage by bicycles, appropriate shared markings will be installed on the pavement, and whereas in order to clearly define the route, appropriate signage will be installed. And whereas the curb to curb street width on the affected street shall be unchanged by the proposed bicycle route. And whereas the Department of Infrastructure and Development desires to construct the facilities listed above in a timely and efficient manner to the benefit of the residents and visitors of the City of Salisbury, now therefore be it ordained by the City of Salisbury, Maryland, that the bicycle facilities be created on Lake Street, Isabella Street, Delaware Avenue, Cypress Street, West Main Street, Wayne Street, Power Street, Avery Street, Milford Street, and Bateman Street as described herein, and be it further enacted and ordained by the City of Salisbury, Maryland, that this ordinance shall take effect upon its final passage.
Thank you, Mr. Tillman. Questions or comments, Mr. Boda?
No questions or comments.
Thank you. Ms. Jackson?
No questions or comments.
Thank you. Ms. Blake?
This is exciting. No questions or comments.
Thank you. I think this is a very good continuation of our plan to protect the youngsters and the alters from ongoing problems with autos and make it much safer for them. I'll now call the motion. All those in favor of ordinance number two six four three, please signify by saying aye. Mr. Boda?
Aye.
Ms. Jackson?
Aye.
Ms. Blake?
Absolutely.
Here votes aye. The first reading of ordinance number two six four three is approved by a vote of four to zero. I'll entertain a motion to approve ordinance number two six four four for the first reading.
So move. Second.
Jackson, Ms. Blake, Mr. Tillman?
This is an ordinance of the City of Salisbury, Maryland to eliminate sixteen parking spaces on Fitzwater Street from Fitzwater Street to the main gate of Chesapeake Shipbuilding approximately three hundred and ten feet east in order to prevent traffic crashes and accommodate a previously approved safe bicycle facility on Fitzwater Street. Whereas the City of Salisbury desires to encourage the use of bicycles throughout the city. And whereas the Salisbury Charter SC eleven dash two gives the city charge of all public ways in the city, and whereas Fitzwater Street has on-street parking along the south frontage of the street between Fitzwater Street and West Main Street, and whereas removal of selected on-street parking from Fitzwater to the main gate of Chesapeake Shipbuilding will allow for safety improvements, and whereas Chesapeake Shipbuilding wholly owns all the property on that side of the street and supports the removal of parking, and whereas the Department of Infrastructure and Development desires to build bicycle facilities in the area listed above and to resolve any issues that could lead to traffic crashes in keeping with the Vision Zero program, now therefore be it ordained by the City of Salisbury, Maryland, that for the purposes and reasons herein above set forth that the removal of sixteen parking spaces on Fitzwater Street from Fitzwater Street to the main entrance of Chesapeake Shipbuilding is hereby approved.
Thank you, Mr. Tillman. Questions or comments, Mr. Boda?
No questions or comments.
Ms. Jackson?
I do have a question, and I do actually approve of the removing of the parking spaces there. But there are other like little mediums now being put on Fitzwater Street where they're putting up front of other people's residents. So, and they're creating, that's creating a parking problem for some of the people who live in the area.
So we are not eliminating any other parking, but the bike lane is going to go up against the curb and then the parking will be on the other side. So once it gets striped, it'll make a lot more sense. But they will still have parking in front of their houses.
Well, with one of them, I see that's impossible. It's just before that business and right that actually newer house that's on the corner, not someone, right next to that business, that auto business shop, it's kind of hard for that person to park there because that medium is basically right there in front of their residence. So they would have to either park further up, farther up, or park in the parking lot of the business.
We can go take a look at that one, but we weren't eliminating any other parking. It might just be configured a little bit differently now. We'll go out and take a look at that one.
Thank you. Thank you.
Could I, could I ask you, Amanda, to please do that and then for our, bring it back to the work session? Since this is only the first reading, we can approve it in the first reading and make sure that it's adjusted if necessary for the second reading. Is that okay, Ms. Jackson?
Oh, it's fine.
Okay. Ms. Blake?
Um, no questions.
Thank you. I do want to assure everyone, Ms. Jackson alluded to it, but anybody that, well, anybody that does not have a driveway will still be able to park on the street. We covered that during the, the work session, just to make sure that no one's concerned about what, how, where they're going to park. We asked that and we discussed that at length at the, at the work session. All right, if there's no other comments, I'll call the motion. All those in favor of ordinance number two six four four for the first reading, please signify by saying aye. Mr. Boda?
Aye.
Ms. Jackson?
Aye.
Ms. Blake?
Aye.
Here votes aye. The first reading of two, ordinance number two six four four is approved by a vote of four to zero. I want to entertain a motion to approve ordinance number two six four five for the first reading.
So move.
Ms. Jackson?
Second.
Mr. Boda? Mr. Tillman?
This is an ordinance of the City of Salisbury to eliminate parking spaces on Power Street from South Division Street to Wayne Street, and to eliminate the parking spaces on Wayne Street from Milford Street to Power Street in order to prevent traffic crashes and to accommodate safe bicycle facilities around the east campus of Salisbury University. Whereas the City of Salisbury desires to encourage the use of bicycles throughout the city, and whereas the city charter SC eleven dash two gives the city charge of all public ways in the city. And whereas Power Street connects South Division Street to Wayne Street and all parcels except one are owned by the university and all parcels have off-street parking. And whereas Wayne Street connects Milford Street to Power Street and all parcels on both sides are owned in their entirety by Salisbury University, and whereas the Department of Infrastructure and Development desires to build bicycle facilities in the areas listed above and to resolve any issues that could lead to traffic crashes in keeping with the Vision Zero program, now therefore be it ordained by the City of Salisbury, Maryland, that for the purposes and reasons herein set forth that the removal of parking spaces on Wayne Street and Power Street as set forth herein is hereby approved.
Mr. Tillman? Questions or comments, Mr. Boda?
No questions or comments.
Ms. Jackson?
No questions or comments.
Ms. Blake?
None.
I would just like to make one comment that we discussed during the work session. This request came from Salisbury University to consider removing these positions. So they are one hundred percent behind it. I'll now call the motion. All those in favor of ordinance number two six four five for the first reading, please signify by saying aye. Mr. Boda?
Aye.
Ms. Jackson?
Aye.
Ms. Blake?
Aye.
Here votes aye. Ordinance number two six four five for the first reading is approved by a vote of four to zero. I want to entertain a motion to approve ordinance number two six four six for the first reading.
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Boda, Ms. Jackson? Mr. Tillman?
Thank you, Mr. Heath. This is an ordinance of the City of Salisbury, Maryland to eliminate parking spaces on West College Avenue from Lower Corp Drive, Lower Corp Drive to Camden Avenue in order to prevent traffic crashes and to accommodate previously approved safe bicycle facility on West College Avenue. Whereas the City of Salisbury desires to encourage the use of bicycles throughout the city, and whereas the city charter SC eleven dash two gives the city charge of all public ways in the city, and whereas West College Avenue has an on-street parking along south frontage of the street between Camden Avenue and Lower Crop Drive, and whereas removal of on-street parking will allow for safety improvements, and whereas Salisbury University wholly owns all the property on that side of the street and supports the removal of parking, and whereas the Department of Infrastructure and Development desires to build bicycle facilities in the area listed above and to resolve any issues that could lead to traffic crashes in keeping with the Vision Zero program, now therefore be it ordained by the City of Salisbury, Maryland, that for the purposes and reasons herein set forth that removal of parking spaces from West College Avenue between Lower Corp Drive and Camden Avenue is hereby approved.
Thank you, Mr. Tillman. Questions or comments, Mr. Boda?
No questions or comments.
Ms. Jackson?
No questions or comments.
Thank you. Ms. Blake?
No questions or comments.
Thank you. I'll now call the motion. All those in favor of ordinance number two six four six for the first reading, please signify by saying aye. Mr. Boda?
Aye.
Ms. Jackson?
Aye.
Ms. Blake?
Aye.
Here votes aye. The first reading of ordinance number two six four six is approved by a vote of four to zero. I want to entertain a motion to approve ordinance number two six four seven for the first reading.
So move.
Second.
Jackson, Ms. Blake? Mr. Tillman?
Thank you. This is an ordinance of the City of Salisbury approving a budget amendment of the city's special revenue fund budget and to accept and appropriate donated funds from the Bless Our Children campaign for the Santa's Workshop Program. Whereas the City of Salisbury's Housing and Community Development Department hosts a Santa's Workshop Program every year. And whereas Bless Our Children wishes to donate funds to help sponsor this annual program, and whereas the donation of funds will be used to purchase gifts, refreshments, and equipment used to run the program. And whereas these donations are to be used to protect the public welfare by purchasing toys to provide to children. And whereas appropriations necessary for this donation must be made upon the recommendation of the mayor and approval of forfeit to the council of the City of Salisbury, now therefore be it ordained by the city council of the City of Salisbury, Maryland, that the city's FY twenty one special revenue fund be and is hereby amended as follows, increase contributions revenue by two thousand dollars and increase operating expense by two thousand dollars.
Thank you, Mr. Tillman. Questions or comments, Mr. Boda?
No questions or comment. We're just grateful for the donation that helps support this program. Helps a lot of kids who might not get as, as much for Christmas. So it's, it's a good thing and we're appreciative of this. Every year they, they support this program. So we're very grateful.
Ms. Jackson?
No comment.
Thank you. Ms. Blake?
No questions or comments.
Thank you. And I too would like to thank Draper Holdings for, for this money. Certainly is, it's needed. And just as a side comment, I think I'm right when I said that I think the final total was around three hundred and fifty two thousand dollars that they collected to go to people that need it severely, and that's a great thing. So again, needed severely. And that's a great thing. So again, thanks to Draper Holdings. I'll now call the motion. All those in favor of ordinance number two, six, four, seven for the first reading, please signify by saying aye. Mr. Boda?
Aye.
Ms. Jackson?
Aye.
Ms. Blake?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Ordinance number two, six, four, seven for the first reading is passed by a vote of four to zero. I'll entertain a motion to approve ordinance number two, six, four, eight for the first reading.
So moved.
Ms. Boda? Okay, that was Ms. Blake?
Yes.
Ms. Blake? May the second. Mr. Tillman?
This is an ordinance of the council of the city of Salisbury, Maryland amending and supplementing ordinance twenty-three fifty-seven passed by the council on October twelfth, two thousand fifteen, approved by the mayor of the city of Salisbury on October fourteenth, two thousand fixed fifteen and effective on October fourteenth, two thousand fifteen in order to authorize and empower the city to use and apply certain investment earnings on the four million, seven hundred twenty-six thousand, two hundred dollar City of Salisbury Public Improvements Bond of two thousand fifteen issued on December first, two thousand fifteen to the projects identified herein as GOB roof and air handler replacement and WWT P H V A C and to identify such additional projects as projects for all purposes for ordinance number twenty-three fifty-seven, providing that this title is a fair statement of the substance of the ordinance authorizing certain city officials to take certain actions in connection with the transactions contemplated by this ordinance, providing that the provisions of this ordinance shall be liberally construed and otherwise generally relating to the use of the proceeds of the two thousand fifteen bond issuance. And you know, again, th- this ordinance was prepared by bond council. There are charts in there showing where the money has been reallocated. And you know, it's self-explanatory. If you'd like me to read on, I'll be happy to.
Oh, that's fine. We have, we've all got it in our packets. That would be great. Thank you, Mr. Tillman. Questions or comments? Mr. Boda?
I, I just like to thank Keith and his team for making sure that we don't let these sit there forever. And when a project's done, we, we, we take the money and we apply it appropriately to the next project instead of having to borrow more money. So a great job to, to their team for and, and, and the teams that manage the projects for saving money. So you know, they, they do a great job at that as well. So thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Boda. Ms. Jackson?
No question, but I also concur with Mia as well.
Thank you, Ms. Jackson. Ms. Blake?
No questions.
Thank you. And I, I concur with Mia. The management of the projects and the use of the, the funds that are generated are greatly appreciated and does supports all the good things that we're trying to do in the city. I'll now call the motion. All those in favor of ordinance number two, six, four, eight for the first reading, please signify by saying aye. Mr. Boda?
Aye. Aye.
Ms. Jackson?
Aye.
Ms. Blake?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Ordinance number two? Pardon me? Oh, Michelle's there. Welcome.
Just got it in the door, so.
No problem. Thank you, Michelle. Did you hear the, did you hear the motion and being read?
I just, I, I wasn't here for the reading, but I read it in the packet. So I, I, I agree. Aye.
Okay, thank you. And the chair votes aye. Ordinance number two, six, four, eight for the first reading passes with a vote of five to zero. I'll entertain a motion to approve ordinance number two, six, four, nine for the first reading.
So moved.
Second.
Ms. Jackson? Ms. Blake? Mr. Tillman?
Thank you. This is another ordinance reallocating bonds. It's an ordinance of the council of the city of Salisbury amending and supplementing ordinance number twenty-four sixty-three passed by the council on November thirteenth, two thousand seventeen, approved by the mayor of the city of Salisbury on November fifteenth, two thousand seventeen and effective on November fifteenth, two thousand seventeen in order to authorize and empower the city to use and apply a portion of the principal amount of the five million, seven hundred twenty-four thousand, eight hundred fifty-three dollar City of Salisbury Public Improvements Bond of two thousand seventeen issued on December thirteenth, two thousand seventeen, plus certain investment earnings thereon to the projects identified herein as GOB roof and air handler replacement and two one-ton dump trucks. In addition to the projects originally identified in ordinance twenty-four sixty-three and to identify such additional projects as projects for all purposes of ordinance twenty-four sixty-three, providing that this title is a fair statement of the substance of this ordinance authorizing certain city officials to take certain actions in connection with the transactions contemplated by this ordinance, providing that the provisions of this ordinance shall be liberally construed and otherwise generally relating to the use of the proceeds of the two thousand seventeen bond. And as before, there's a chart in here showing where the money is being shifted from until.
Thank you, Mr. Tillman. Questions or comments, Mr. Boda?
Just doing my comments from the previous one and this is why we have a clean audit every year. So they keep good financial practices.
Thank you, Mr. Boda. Ms. Jackson?
No questions or no comments.
Thank you. Ms. Blake?
I'm just tickled to death. We're getting those dump trucks. Trucks for a long time. This is great. No other comments.
Thank you. This is Gregory.
No questions or comments.
I, I don't have either. I can't add anything to that. We'll now call the motion. All those in favor of ordinance number two, six, four, nine for the first reading, please signify by saying aye. Mr. Boda?
Is it too late to amend for Angela to get a ride in the dump truck? I'm an aye.
You know, I can drive a dump truck. I can. I can. I used to work for the state highway department when I was a teenager back in Kent County and I drove a dump.
Thank, thank you, Mr. Boda for that.
See? You asked for that.
On the pillow.
Ms. Jackson?
No questions, no comments.
This agenda is too long.
It is. It's lengthy.
That was a vote.
Ah, oh.
Okay, we got your positive vote. This is Gregory.
Go ahead.
I, and Nick would like to know if he could take a ride with you, Angela.
Yes. It's on.
Ms. Blake?
Don't ride with y'all.
Ms. Blake? Did you vote?
Yes. Absolutely.
Okay. And the chair votes aye. Ordinance number two, six, four, nine for the first reading is passed by a vote of five to zero. I'll entertain a motion to approve ordinance number two, six, five, zero for the first reading.
So moved. Second.
Ms. Boda and Ms. Blake? Mr. Tillman?
Thank you, Mr. Heath. This is an ordinance of the city of Salisbury to authorize the mayor to enter into a contract, contract with the Salisbury Wycomico Metropolitan Planning Organization for the purpose of accepting grant funds in the amount of seven thousand dollars and to approve a budget amendment to the grant fund to appropriate funds for offsetting RFP twenty-one, one oh one port feasibility study. Whereas the city of Salisbury has solicited qualified vendors for a request for proposal RFP exhibit one to the ordinance for a port feasibility study to assess the economic and physical feasibility of a multi-user port along the Wycomico River. And whereas the Salisbury Wycomico Metropolitan Planning Organization is a federally designated regional transportation planning agency for the urbanized area encompassing Sussex County, Salisbury, Wycomico County and a small portion of Somerset County. And whereas the SWMPO coordinates with appropriate authorities and departments of all impacted state and local governments in an effort to assist with solving regional problems and implementing regional goals and policies. And whereas SWMPO desires to support the city's efforts to perform the study and whereas the city of Salisbury must enter into a memorandum of understanding with SWMPO defining how the funds will be expended. And whereas all funds shall be used to offset the cost of hiring a consultant to perform the study and whereas SWMPO requests two separate presentations of the final study to the SWMPO Technical Advisory Committee and the SWMPO Council and will add the SWMPO logo to the final study along with language confirming that funding was provided by, was provided from SWMPO. And whereas seven dash two-nine of Salisbury City Charter prohibits the city, city from entering into a contract that requires an expenditure to not appropriated or authorized by the city council. And whereas appropriations necessary to execute the purpose of this grant must be made upon the recommendation of the mayor and approval of four fifths of the council of the city of Salisbury now therefore be it ordained by the city council of the city of Salisbury, Maryland that Mayor Jacob R. Day is authorized to enter into a grant agreement with the Salisbury Wycomico Metropolitan Planning Organization to accept grant funds in the amount of seven thousand and be it further ordained that city's grant fund budget be and is hereby amended as follows. Increase the port feasibility donation matching fund account by seven thousand and increase the consulting fees expense account by seven thousand dollars.
Thank you, Mr. Tillman. Questions or comments, Mr. Boda?
I just want to make a note. Last week in the comprehensive economic development strategy meeting for Tri-County Council, they have noted this project as a, officially as a regional project with that organization, which, which again helps us with grants and puts us on, on that list when this project comes up for consideration at various levels. So just wanted to make sure that was noted as well.
Thank you, Mr. Boda. Ms. Jackson?
Comment? And I, go ahead.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Blake?
No comments.
Thank you. Mrs. Gregory?
No comments.
I would love to, to say thi- this has been talked about for years. And I would love to see a mini inner harbor on the Wycomico River. Can just imagine that and think about that. It would be fantastic. I will now call the motion. All those in favor of ordinance number two, six, five, zero for the first reading, please signify by saying aye. Mr. Boda?
Aye.
Ms. Jackson?
Aye.
Ms. Blake?
Aye.
Mrs. Gregory?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Ordinance number two, six, five, zero for the first reading is passed by a vote of fi- five to zero. I'll entertain a motion to approve ordinance number two, six, five, one for the first reading.
So moved. So moved. Second.
Jackson? Ms. Blake? You okay, Mr. Tillman?
I, I just, just took a swig of water. We're, we're having fun tonight, Mr. Heath. It's, I want to ride in that dump truck too.
Let's go.
Okay. Go right, go right ahead and start.
Okay. This is an ordinance of the city of Salisbury approving an amendment of the city's water sewer capital project fund budget to reallocate funding for the wastewater treatment plant H V A C project. Whereas the H V A C system for the main building at the wastewater treatment plant is in need of replacement and whereas the city has received an estimate, estimate, has received an estimated ninety thousand dollars to replace the system. And whereas there are available funds from interest accrued on the FY twenty sixteen bond issue that was approved by the city council on October fourteenth, two thousand fifteen and issued on December first, two thousand fifteen. Now therefore be it ordained by the city council of the city of Salisbury, Maryland that city's water sewer capital projects fund budget be and is hereby amended as follows. Under revenue wastewater treatment plant H V A C, there will be an increase of ninety thousand dollars and expenditures for construction of the wastewater treatment plant H V A C will be ninety thousand dollars.
Thank you, Mr. Tillman. Questions or comments, Mr. Boda?
No questions or comments.
Thank you. Ms. Jackson?
No comments.
Thank you. Ms. Blake?
No questions or comments.
Thank you, Mrs. Gregory?
No questions or comments.
Thank you. I'll now call the motion. All those in favor of ordinance number two, six, five, one for the first reading, please signify by saying aye. Mr. Boda?
Aye.
Ms. Jackson?
Aye.
Ms. Blake?
Aye.
Mrs. Gregory?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Ordinance number two, six, five, one for the first reading is approved by a vote of five to zero. Well, that concludes the agenda for this evening and I would now open the floor for public comments. Anybody that would like to speak, please identify yourself. Bearing none, I'll now ask for comments, Ms. Glance, from the city's perspective.
Well, happy new year. First legislative meeting in the new year, right? Just want to, you know, talk about, start talking about vaccines more and more to get it into, to folks head that, you know, this is an incredibly safe vaccine and that when your time comes, I hope that everyone is willing to, to take it. We are, we are working with the county and, and the county health department and the hospital to support them in any way that they need. And we're collecting every, every employee that's interested in getting the vaccine to try to make a smooth process for whenever the city team is called. So just want to keep that on, on the forefront of everybody's mind. The other, other thing I just wanted to mention was we had a, a two fatality fire over the weekend on First Street on the west side of town, which was absolutely devastating. I just wanted to share that we are waiting for fire marshals, their, their investigation to conclude, to let us know what happened there. But no matter what, the city is looking at ways that we can improve our codes that already exist. But from, from our point of view, that, that property wasn't up to, up to code that we have currently. So it's certainly an opportunity to, to look, look internally. And you know, I haven't seen anything out there for support for those, those families that have been displaced and the families of those that are left behind. Certainly something I'd be happy to, to support if there is something being organized. So, thank you, Jack.
Thank you. Mr. Boda?
Um, again, you know, our condolences to those, to those families that were lost this weekend in that fire. And I'll concur with Julia. If there's, there's anything that we can do for those families, if anybody knows, please let us know so that we can share it. Because I'm, you know, I know our community and I know the love in our community and we'll, we'll take care of our own. So if anybody hears of that, let us know so that we can all share and contribute and support. You know, with regards to the things that happened last week in our nation's capital, you know, I'm, I'm not going to get into, you know, all the politics and everything that happened there. But you know, from my perspective, what happened was wrong. And it's not what our country stands for. You know, if you look at our council and our government and, and you know, from different political points of view, from one spectrum to the other, but we get along, we respect each other, we respect each other's opinions. We find ways to work together even though we have differences in opinion. We don't, we don't focus on our differences. We focus on, on the job that we have to do and the things that are before us. And we do it as a team. We do it as a family. We do it with love. That's what America is about. Not what we saw last week. With that, that, that's all I have to say.
Thank you, Mr. Boda. Ms. Jackson?
Um, as you know, I am devastated about the fire, not just because it was in my district. If it had been in anybody's district or in Wycomico County, I would still feel the same way. And I would like to see us do some work, do a work session in reference to housing and community development on inspections and permits and things of that sort. So we can be caper breast of what is really going on because there are some things that are missing here, some pieces. And as Julia said, there is an investigation. And I have no right to interfere, but I do want to know. I have questions about things that I really need to know. She said that. She said that um, the permits were up to date, okay, the permits may have been up to date. But how often do we inspect these dwellings? How often do we do it, that's one of my questions, um. How long has it been since we've revamped or revised our housing code? When was the last time it was done, and I know a lot of that's probably mandated through the state by the state. But I, we, this, these are things that we need to know, because we don't want this to happen again. And as I said before, Jack, and you all know, when you say something about painting. The outside of a house to make it look good. That's just like putting an evening gown on me right now, and I'm broken. Inside. I'm hurt. Because two lives were lost. And I don't want to see that happen again, not in any part of Salisbury. And I just want us to work on this and get this right, because it shouldn't have happened. It shouldn't have happened at all, um, and as Mira has said also, um, my deepest condolences to the families. Because I do know one of the families myself personally. From the city and from my family. Um, if there's anything I can do, and I do have some information for one of the persons. Well, two of the persons, one of them that is displaced and one of them that has that, I don't know the information about the lady. But if someone wishes to send it to me via Facebook, I would be more than glad to do it, but if the city wants to know, I will give you that information, but um. We have to do something. We we have to, we have to work, and we're working, I'm not saying that we're not working, but we have to be expedient and effective and efficient in what we do. Especially when it comes to our residents. We have to be on task, and as far as Mira said about what happened, um. The six, it was really dev- that was devastating, I I thought it was a nightmare, you know, I mean, I would have never in a million years expected people. Anyone to do what they did to our capital, totally disrespectful and out of order. And I pray to God that it never happens again. Under the leadership of the presidents coming forth and those after Biden. Um, I wish everybody a safe night and remember to mask up, COVID is not gone. Social distance. Um. Get tested. Uh, thank you.
Thank you. Angela?
Oh, well, it's, you know, by far was it a significant tragedy with the the loss of life uh, in a house fire. That that certainly is very devastating, and I think we're, um, wait to see what the investigation. You know, says at the end, end of that term, whenever that's going to be, and the city to, you know, look at whatever it needs to look at. If it be code or if it be revamping something, look at a work session to discuss that, discuss the investigation or what they, what the findings were. Um, it's just really sad about the the loss of life and um, April, if you have any information or. A word forward, I know the one lady that was displaced, she's in a hotel at the moment. And so. You can, you know, maybe pass on some information to us about that, but um. Also, if you, if you are healthy enough, please, please consider giving blood, the eastern shore is chronically low on blood. And that's all I have.
Thank you, Angela. Michelle?
Yeah, I mean, I, there's not much I can say that hasn't already been said, I just, I I I I'm heartbroken about the loss of life. And you know, I'm I'm eager to see what the the investigation reveals. You know, and hopefully it's something that we can do something about to to prevent it from happening again. As far as the events of the past week. Now, this has been incredibly difficult for a lot of folks, and I agree with Mira that. We have to find a way to to move forward and and work together. But by the same token, you know, hate has no home here. It's not welcome, as far as I'm concerned, and and what we saw. In in DC was just hatred, absolute hatred, and that is just not acceptable. And that's not something I'm willing to compromise with, so you know. I I'm not sure where we go from here, it's going to be a longer. It's a lot of work, but we we. We have to draw a line somewhere, so. Back to the fire, I I I send my condolences and please, April, send me whatever you find out about. Any kind of help for the families, I'll be happy to to share it and pass it on and and make sure we spread the word. That's all I have.
Thank you, Michelle, uh, first of all, uh, Julia, could I ask you uh, to do me a favor? Maybe not the next count, uh, the next work session, maybe the following one, could we have someone, I know for myself, I'm not sure. How often uh, buildings are inspected or how they're ju- how they're generated, is it by complaint, is it by whatever? Could we have a little, maybe a ten, fifteen minute? Education course for all of us to to as the starting point for uh, if there's things that we can do to help. That, great, I, you're nodding, so that's good. Secondly, um, I send my condolences to the families of the two individuals that were killed in the fire. And the five individuals that lost their lives. Last week. I was going to comment tonight, but. As you all spoke, I started to get angry again. And I would, if you really want to know where my head's at. Go to my Facebook page and read my Facebook. We as a city. We as a county and a state and a nation. Are better than this. And we have to. Get together and make sure. That this kind of. I I'm going to stop there because. I'm I'm working myself up. Please pray for all those individuals we talked about. We're starting to get a handle on the COVID a little bit, uh, because our numbers are not climbing like everybody else. But we're far away, far, far away from getting it under control, so please wear your masks, social distance. And take care of yourselves. With that, uh, the meeting is adjourned, thank you, everyone.